It is now seven o'clock. We're going to open this meeting in open session in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter thirty eight twenty, the open meeting session portion of this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com. And members of the public will not be able to physically attend. This meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast channel twelve. And it'll also be viewed via live stream on WHCA TV and will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. At that point, can we please rise for the President of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as customary, we will just reserve a moment of silence and keep your thoughts on anyone who has tested positive COVID nineteen that they get healthy real quick. I'd like a motion to approve Bill and Peril want.
So moved Carl.
Do I have a second?
Second, Randy.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So move Carl.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Randy.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, first on it is COVID nineteen update chief.
Evening everybody. Just a brief update for you. Speaking with the Board of Health today and in the nurse. We have a hundred and one new cases over the past fourteen days. That's on top of the several hundred, the several hundred that we already had on the books. Whitman's COVID numbers are well, well, probably over two hundred and eighty to well over three hundred positive cases in the town of Whitman right now. Those are both positive cases and contact tracing cases where they're probably going to be positive in the next few days. So we're, we're pretty much at a critical standpoint. Our percentage number was ten point two four percent about two weeks ago. It's now ten point five percent. The nurse is expecting that to possibly climb even higher this week. We don't have the New Year's numbers in as of yet, which we expect to continue to climb. So I, I can tell you that our local hospitals are all at surge capacity. They're transferring patients out every day just to try to make room for new patients like coming in. And the patients that we're seeing at the fire department level are very sick patients. We're transporting a lot more of COVID positive patients than we were in the first wave. And there's, there's, there's no light at the end of the tunnel right now. And until we get past the some like next surge. So I would just, you know, I like to use the like analogy that, you know, in the fire service, we say that a smoke detector is your first line of defense for a house fire. While in COVID, your first line of defenses is a facial covering. There's a lot of non-believers out there. There's a lot of people that think that this is still a hoax. And I would suggest that if they're out there that they should just go visit a ICU or CCU right now because more and more people are dying like every day and, and, and I have one of my members, Son of Us. He is in his mid twenties. He's in critical condition in the ICU right now. So it's, 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 it's not good out there.
Then we need to keep him in our thoughts. Thank you very much, Chief. Welcome back to our administrative assistant there. Lisa, glad to see you back from vacation, safe and sound. Did you have anything further you want to go on to COVID nineteen?
No, interesting. We actually Massa Sawyer is, has been closed. They closed yesterday, today and tomorrow for any type of COVID testing. So we went over to Randolph. Quite an interesting setup they have over there Randolph. I can't even tell you how many cars were in the lot there of the ice skating rink. They looped us around the corner to a different facility. Once we get in, it was quick and now we're just waiting for the results. So Randolph is open, even though Massa Sawyer is closed right now.
Okay, thank you very much Lisa. Welcome back. All right. Next on the agenda, on the new business, the chief is asking us to approve four issues, four things that he would like to get accomplished to stay up in front and handle the COVID nineteen situations in the town of Whitman. So the first request that he has and asked permission from the board is to authorize and hire a part-time tent administrative assistant to work with his department and documentation and scheduling and reporting of all vaccinated vaccination programs, which will be funded by the COVID monies. This is very simple. We got the information. This is something that the chief needs to record what he needs to get done because of the fact that it's coming in so fast and furious. Is that right, Chief?
That is correct. The vaccines are here and we have fifteen thousand residents that we need to vaccinate and.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved Carl.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Randy.
Does anybody have further questions to the chief on this issue? Seeing none. Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. The second request that the chief has is to appoint one member of the board to serve as a fiduciary authority on their future expenditures for the COVID cares funds. That any further stimulus funding, the member would work with the accountant's office, the treasurer collector and the chief to work with and any requests that are needed to make sure that they are COVID related and it will be reimbursed. Is there anybody that would like to volunteer to assist in this with the issues? Seeing, Randy?
I'll step forward if you need somebody, Dan.
I would appreciate that. Thank you very much for stepping forward. Anyone, any, anyone else? All right. I'd like a motion to appoint Randy as our representative from the town to work with the chief and Mary, Mary Beth and Ken. And whoever else is on the team with the Board of Health in solving some of the issues that there may be.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on it? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you very much, Randy. On the third item that he's looking for is working in partnership with the Board of Health. And they need to provide candidates to bring on board for their COVID reporting and procedures requirements. We spoke about it. He says he spoke about an email list. I would ask the board to assign the recreation office. This is one of the things that I talked to the Board of Health about. The recreation, recreation office in Town Hall is really not being used that much. And if at all. So I suggested because of the situation that we would like a separate office for them to be working on dealing with these issues, that that would be the ideal spot for it. And if recreation ever needed it, it would be at a time when they probably wouldn't be in there or they could use a smaller town hall, the smaller town hall room. So I don't know if anyway, do you need a motion to be able to have them use that room? Is it the sense of the board that that would be okay?
Personally, I think it would be best if the board voted to allow the Board Health and us to use that room. So there's no gray area.
Okay, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Sure, I'll, I'll move it.
Here a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? Seeing none. Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And then the last item, it says for the fourth item effective next week, I am reverting the fire, the fire back to strict policies from last spring, which includes limiting to no in-person inspections, no outside training, extensive modification of our response policies and members allowed and residents, et cetera. In other words, what he's trying to do is keep the fire department safe by maintaining that no one is allowed in any of the of the fire stations and any of the doors, just they'll deal with it outside. And as far as mutual aid, they will stage for station coverage rather than enter the station. And they would suggest that the board look at other town operations and potentially do the same, potentially do the same. I would have to say that if there's any town building that those with outside facilities will say the only two I would say would be the library and the, and the, the senior center. Now I know the library, I don't know if they allow people into their front door to get books or whatever. I think maybe we should think that, think that over and not allow that. And second of all, I know that the, the senior center, they do meals on wheels and I don't know. Maybe they need to bring those, those packages outside and let the volunteers that are doing that collect them out there or whatever. I think that they need to take a second look at that. That's my opinion on it.
And quickly, my point on that was I, was I think that the board may, I may want to ask each other to to look at their operation and, and, and make sure that pretty much their buildings are locked down.
Okay.
We're in a very critical time right now in, in, in people mixing with residents when they don't need to be. Make sure that people have masks on at all times, stuff like that, because COVID is everywhere in town right now.
Okay, so I probably like a motion to state that that'll be a temporary policy as long as we're the COVID nineteen situation is among us. Do I, can I hear a motion to that effect?
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll move that, Dan, and we'll, we'll leave the judgment up to Board of Health and, and the chief.
Okay, and okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second, Randy.
All right, any further discussion?
Um, just a quick.
Go ahead, Justin, yes.
So at least, you know, we should reach out to each department head, ask them to take a look at their, their operations if they can space out. Within Town Hall, we've got our, the selectmen's meeting room, we haven't used in several months. The FinCon meeting room hasn't been used in a few months. There's probably opportunities to space out if we want to look that way.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Any further discussion?
For informational purposes, Dan, the, the library has not been allowing people in.
Okay.
Well, anyway, if you want to take a book out, you call them up and they leave the books out on a table. And when you return it, you return it up to outside. So.
Okay, as long, I mean, I'm certainly sure that the other town buildings are looking at their policies and they're doing, doing things as safely as possible. They understand. Okay, any further discussion?
Just to clarify from the chief, chief, is there any other things that as far as the protocols right now that you feel that need to be strengthened or implemented that by the next time we meet? I know masks are something that we're wearing within the building, but is that being enforced? Should it be the, the whole time you're, you're in the, in a, a town building, wearing a mask? Should we be allowing, you know, the taking off of masks at your own personal workspace, anything like that? Is there anything that you think that you can think of that we're not doing right now?
I, I think the biggest thing is the facial coverings. At the fire station, my members are required to wear a mask at all times unless they can properly socially distance six to six to like, like ten feet away. You know, where our own were some like enemies. I, I if, quite frankly, if anybody steps up from, from their desk and leaves their workspace, they should have a face covering on.
Right.
And that's the biggest problem. And, 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 you know, we all know what went on this week and, and, you know, I'm not pointing fingers, but you know, I think we need to really step down on people and make sure that, that if people are going to roam the halls or use a coffee machine or use the bathroom, that they have a face covering on and they're not having, you know, gatherings and meetings in the hallways.
Yeah, that seems, that seems logical. I mean, I think that if they're in the office by them, if the one employee is in an office by themselves all day, you know, they may want to not wear a mask unless they have to get up, leave the room and use the bathroom one way or another. So I think that would be sufficient enough.
Right. And if you have an office that has two or more people in it comfortable, like, like Justin said, break them up and move one into the FinCon and single down.
Okay, sounds like a plan. All right, feeling no other discussions. We had a motion and a second, I believe. So we'll vote on it. Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you very much, Chief. I think that ends your part of the agenda.
Yes, have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I'm a little bit late. It's a little past seven fifteen. I'm running five minutes late. Sorry about that. But we are going to have, as we're scheduling, an event to conduct interviews for the position of veteran agent. And we are going to have a veteran agent go over the questions that the, want to ask the three applicants. And if you would like to, you know, start the process and we can listen and as each applicant is finished with their interview, if any of the board, members of the board have a question, they can also ask after that. So either Brian or Lisa, you want to interview our agent and the members that are applying for it? Why don't you step up?
Hey, Dan, I, I think it was, I was under the impression that Chris was going to be doing the questioning.
Right, but I didn't know if, if, all right, if Chris, then Chris, you can, you can just, all right, why don't you start it, Chris? I was wondering if you wanted to.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Buckley. I'm the transitional VSO for Whitman, full-time for East Bridgewater. We conduct in the interviews tonight. And first up, I want to introduce Sarah Lansing.
That's okay.
And she will be our first candidate. Anything before I start the questioning?
Hi, everybody. Sorry I jumped in so early. I thought I was going to get put in a waiting room.
No, sorry, we were late. Sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm patient.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll start off. Sarah, in your own words, can you explain the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one fifteen? And what type of benefits it offers our, our veterans here in Whitman?
Sure. Chapter one fifteen is a Massachusetts program and it's designed to help veterans and their dependents needing assistance that meet the financial requirements. It provides fuel, clothing, food, housing assistance. And what the process is, is they would contact their local VSO, fill out the proper paperwork, figure out if they actually do qualify financially to receive that assistance. And the VSO is the person that handles all of that with the veteran or their dependent.
All right, excellent. I appreciate that. What type of experience do you have that would benefit the town of Whitman's veterans in your role as the Veteran Service Officer?
Um, so I was in the military for nine years. I was in the National Guard out of Hingham, Massachusetts, the temp, I'd be a transportation company. And we deployed overseas in two thousand and two, two thousand and three. And then upon returning home, I grew very active with a Duxbury American Legion. I am past commander. I am still a very active member there. I participate in all of their meetings and all of their events, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, et cetera. So for over a decade, I've been very, very active with the Duxbury Legion. And since I became active, including the time that I was commander, we were at a very low point in terms of the nonprofit veterans organization. And now we are in the top twenty of Massachusetts out of all American Legions in terms of our membership numbers, which is pretty surprising from small towns, Duxbury. I'm sure that I could rally the troops in Whitman too and gain that commodity that we have now.
Excellent, thank you. Can you tell us of time where you've faced a situation in your job and a difficult situation in your job and how you'd handle it? The reason we preference this is lots of times we, we come in contract, in contact with veterans and we don't always get to tell them good news. Sometimes we have to tell them they don't qualify for one fifteen or the VA process didn't go the way they wanted it to and how you would handle that.
Sure. Well, I know that they, everyone does have the option to still appeal if they do get declined the benefits. And there are a ton of other benefits that they could use, maybe not as as reliable as chapter one fifteen, but there's certainly a lot of other veterans benefits that are out there. As for a relatable experience of that, I can say, like I just said, the Duxbury Legion start, and I started being active there. It was at a very poor membership count. It was me and two other guys trying to rebuild the brand. And one of the gentleman's name, well, I'm not going to say his name, but one of the gentlemen was very, very helpful. He was our treasurer. We cut all of our costs. He, he was like kind of guy that liked to say no to everything. So then when we did start to become a more active and financially stable post, he still continued to say no, even on things that didn't make sense, like a copy with the commander morning. It was like, no, 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 this isn't that expensive of a, of an item for us to do to get everybody together, you know? So unfortunately, we had to let him go from his position as a treasurer or even be active in the post anymore.
Excellent, thank you. In your own words, can you explain to us the VA claims process and how, how that works? You know, if, if you do have any knowledge in that, in that field?
Sure. So the VA claims process, first you have to ensure that you are active in, in the VA, which requires getting your VA card, stuff like that. And I actually use the VA for my insurance currently. Although I'm not a disabled vet. And so the VA claims process, you fill out the paperwork to become a disabled vet in terms of the VA. And you have to prove that that happened while you were on active duty with the military. And then they vet you the same way they would do for the one fifteen and provide you with the medical services that you need.
Thank you. As the VSO for the town of Whitman, you would have, you would have to manage the, the budget. And could you tell us how you would have, how you would manage the budget and any previous employment that would, would help you in that endeavor?
Sure. I'm, I'm, I would probably base it off of years past in terms of the budget for the town of Whitman. And virtually copy it just based off of however they've done it in years past in terms of experience. When I worked at Health Trax Fitness and Wellness, I was the office manager for them. And the six departments that they had, I organized our budget. We called it the big six. I brought up their numbers weekly to meetings to review, to make sure that they were staying within their budget or and hitting their targets goals for in terms of sales.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. How do you plan to organize your day if you were to become the VSO?
I would certainly spend a lot of my day reaching out to veterans and getting a big group together of people that all want to work together. As you know, Chris, you're a veteran. Once you're in the military, you become part of family, you know, and certainly with the BFW, the very active BFW and the American Legion have two pretty big veteran families already going in town. And if we can all work together to just take care of any of the other vets that need help.
All right, um, what type of systems do you use to stay organized daily basis with your routine? Word, Excel, Outlook, any other, any other little quirks?
Okay, so I am certainly very experienced in all of the Microsoft programs. And I'm also competent in QuickBooks and a gym website called Twin Oats. That's how they did all of their billing, et cetera. And that would never coincide with the town job. But I can learn almost any program on the computer savvy.
Excellent, thank you. And you've touched on your, your Duxbury Veterans Club. Do you have any other experience? You know, working with, with, with vets on any type of regular basis?
Really, it's just the, the American Legion that I'm very active in, that I work with vets on a regular basis. I organized and ran the Memorial Day services for the town of Duxbury during COVID. We did a, instead of, since everything's canceled, we had no Fourth of July or Fourth of July parade. So we did a deck the doors event where people got a piece of paper and colored it or decorated it and shared all those pictures online. If anybody asks a veteran's question in Duxbury, I feel like I'm probably in the top three people that it would call to find out the answer.
Excellent, thank you. How do you plan on using community outreach in your role as the Veteran Service Officer?
I would probably, if allowed, I would probably start a Facebook page for the Veteran Service and Whitman. I couldn't find one currently. And I would probably do mailings such as in Kingston, I get a mailing. I'm a Kingston resident, so I get a mailing every year and it dates me to march in the Memorial Day Parade that Kingston holds. This year, they sent one out that said they were giving out a free lunch. It's just a little postcard. And then obviously I would be really active on other social media outlets too.
Excellent, thank you. What is your passion when it comes to working with veterans?
I love working with veterans. Even now I'm not currently working, but I spend my days, my mornings, I go visit people that and veterans and members in Duxbury that are alone and home and I just want somebody to talk to. I feel like I'm open and I communicate well. People tend to typically like me. And I know that without being, being able to attend anything at Legion, people really miss getting together, seeing a friendly face, having someone just to talk to.
Excellent, thank you. And this concludes the question.
Hey, thank you very much, Chris. Does any members of the board have a question that they would like to ask Sarah, please? Anyone asked, anyone have any questions? Well, I'll start off. Sarah, one of the issues that we've had in the past is that sometimes the paperwork doesn't get done properly. I know, I mean, we take care of our veterans, but paperwork needs to be done properly and sent, and sent in so that the, the town does get reimbursement on certain amounts. And that was left undone and we had to have our previous town administrator and our treasurer collector stay, you know, work a couple of three weekends, make sure just to catch up on that. Do you find that an issue?
I do not find it an issue. I, I've done a ton of office work. The administrative side of this position doesn't scare me at all. I certainly am organized and I will make sure that the town gets their money, their percentage of the money from the vets that they're taking care of. Oh my gosh.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have. Anyone else? No, thank you. I guess that, thank you very much.
Don't hit me with all of them at once.
All right, Chris, I guess is the next applicant here or?
Uh, we have someone in the waiting room. I can.
I mean, we're early, so.
Couple them in, yeah.
Okay, well, I, I guess that's my cue to leave. It was really nice seeing you all virtually. And I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, and thank you for applying. Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, I would really love to work for the town of Whitman. I feel like I could do like a lot of good things for the veterans in, in the town.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys. Happy New Year.
Same to you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, let's, it's a phone number. Let's see if this is the next applicant.
Which is James Murphy?
Connecting audio.
Is somebody on?
I think he needs to unmute himself probably.
Yeah. I think he just did. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Chris, you're up.
All right. Sir, how are you today?
Good, Chris.
In your own words, sir, can you explain Massachusetts Law, General Law one fifteen and what type of benefits it offers the veterans here in Whitman?
It's basically a need basis for veterans who are down and out or indigent. It's kind of based on their income and their needs. It provides things like food. things like food, shelter, clothing, fuel, medical care. Um, you know, how many dependents and how much you make and so forth and so on. And there's like fifteen different uh, parts of this uh, law that they get into other areas like uh, uh, taking care of uh, graves and uh, death benefits and, and things like that. So it's, it's, it's a wide array of uh, benefits offered to veterans.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, what type of experience do you have that would benefit the town of Whitman's veterans um, in your role here as the uh, Veteran Service Officer?
Well, I've, like I say, I've been an accountant for over thirty years and I've dealt with a lot of different um, different agencies and people and, you know, my college background and you know, I'm the finance officer of the American Legion and the Sons of the American Legion here in Whitman. Um, I've served on parade committees for the tri-town Veteran's Day Parades. I've worked the toll booths for the Sons of the Legion. I'm also a member of the Marine Corps League Caddy Detachment in Quincy. I think I have a passion for veterans issues. I've had articles published in the Whitman-Hanson Express. Uh, some of my pitches have appeared, you know, Veterans Day ceremonies, the uh, the street naming for Private Line again, those most, a lot of those were my pitches that were in the paper. So I, I, you know, I feel I have a lot to offer the town.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you tell us of a time where you had to face a difficult situation in job and uh, how you handled it? The reason we uh, we go this way is because veterans don't always get uh, you know, the right answer from what they uh, what they want. And sometimes they're going to just have to uh, deal with uh, something they're not used to.
Yeah, um, difficult situation arise all the time, but I mean, not getting a promotion or um, getting laid off or just, you know, getting bad news. Uh, you just got to deal with it. I mean, I usually just, my way of dealing with stress and all that stuff is just to go outside and get some fresh air and you know, take ten or fifteen minutes and just, you know, suck in the sunshine and calm down basically, but um, you know, uh, there's a lot of things in life that don't go your way. You just got to deal with it and keep moving forward. Just do the best you can with what you have. That's all you can do in life. It's kind of my attitude.
All right. Thank you. In your own words, can you explain the VA claims process um, and anything you know about uh, you know, that uh, in depth?
Well, just personally, I recently put in a claim for tinnitus and hearing loss. Uh, Tom McCarthy was the Veterans Agent and you know, I just met with him and filled all the, the paperwork out and you know, right now I'm waiting to hear back on, on the claim. They're still gathering information. I haven't heard any more on it, but um, you know, it's a process. You go through, you file with the state and it ends up in the VA and then they review it and probably have me in for a hearing test at some point to see if I qualify for a uh, disability or not and um, I was stationed at Camp Lejeune from in the early seventies, so the whole, sure you're aware of the whole toss, toxic water situation, but I
Yes.
I didn't um, I didn't have any type of cancer, which is what you needed to uh, to be qualified for any of that. So um, I have a general idea of the process.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you tell us how you've managed budgets in your previous employment opportunities?
Well, like I say, I've been an accountant for thirty years and that's kind of what I did at Massad. It was my, my title was Staff Associate for Budgeting and Accounting. So I worked with the budgets. Um, the uh, we call them trust fund custodians for each department would meet with the president, vice presidents, accumulate a budget and then you, you know, the board of trustees would have to approve it. Then all the numbers would basically flow through me and I'd enter it into the accounting system and keep an eye on the budgets and so forth. We have monthly reports that I would do, you know, as part of my job. And I dealt with the state uh, accounting system, the MARS system. Uh, we get a house one budget each college when I worked at Massad. Um, so I was in charge of that. Basically, I was the only person that used the state accounting system, so you know, that I have no problems with budgets, so it's what I went to school for in a way.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, how do you plan to organize your day um, if you were to become the Veteran Service Officer?
Well, for about the last twenty years, I mean, I, I arrive at work, well, you know, usually the first thing I did is I'd read my emails, go through all that and normally knowing myself, um, late morning and early afternoon is when I handled all my difficult assignments, uh, numbers related, uh, things of that nature. Early in the morning, you know, it takes me a while to get rolling and later in the afternoon, uh, you know, you start to wind down a little, but you know, and I check, after I check my emails, I check my phone messages and go from there, who I need to call back, who I need to email, who can wait, who needs what, when. And uh, you know, set a time late morning, return calls, emails, same thing in the afternoon. And that's it. And see, see what to do when and when I have to have things done. Cause accounting, you know, was very time sensitive.
Excellent. Thank you. What type of systems um, do you use to stay organized in your daily routine? Um, i.e. Word, Excel, Outlook, anything, anything out of the ordinary?
Uh, nothing out of the ordinary, really. Um, kind of old school. Sometimes I have things written down on my desk pad and I also um, have it on my uh, computer as well. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. What type of experience do you have in working with veterans?
Uh, just at my role at the American Legion for the last ten years, where I've been the financial officer of um, the monthly meetings, um, just commiserating at the post. Um, same thing at the Caddy, the Marine Corps League, you know, you, you listen to other veterans talk and what their problems are, what's bothering them as far as, you know, service related uh, issues. Basically, uh, that's it.
All right. Thank you. How do you plan on using community outreach in your role as the Veteran Service Officer?
Um, everyone seems to, you know, social media seems to be the, the thing that uh, all the younger veterans are uh, looking at. Um, traditional uh, sources don't seem to get the uh, younger guys interested in joining the American Legion, the VFW or any of these other um, veterans organizations. So you'd have to think out of the blocks. A lot of these younger guys really don't want to belong to the uh, service organizations for whatever reason, I don't know, but um, social media, I guess, would be, you know, uh, the American Legion has plenty of stuff out there, so I would start with that.
All right. Thank you. What is your passion when it comes to working with veterans?
Uh, just helping them out to find out what the problem is to see if, you know, I can help find a resolution as to what, what they need, what they need, what their needs are, you know, um, death benefit or, or um, you know, GI bill or, or something, you know, even you know, VA ho- home loans and stuff like that. Um, whenever you, I, I don't see a whole lot on is like permanent housing for uh, veterans, like low income uh, veterans, like a lot of these towns and cities have a lot of uh, these uh, programs for uh, low income residents, these big projects, they put aside a certain amount of units or apartments for low income people. They should do that for veterans too. I, I don't know if, I don't see that happening. I mean, that, that, to me, that's a big issue. There's a lot of veterans out there that really need help with uh, housing that are guys that are working, they're just struggling to make ends meet, especially with rents. Rents are closing in on two thousand dollars a month. That's kind of crazy and you know, that's a lot of money and there's a lot of people that are struggling that need help. So I mean, I think that's an area that veterans uh, will need help with in the future. So, you know.
Well, I appreciate it, sir. This concludes the question.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Chris. Does anybody have any questions of uh, of Jim? See, now I will ask the same question that I asked the previous person asking for. We've had uh, veteran agents in the uh, past that were very good dealing with the veterans, but as far as the paperwork is concerned, a lack of uh, getting it into the, into the proper spaces, you know, into the state for the town to be reimbursed on certain funds. Do you see that as a problem?
Uh, not with my accounting background, no. I mean, just uh, as a finance officer of the Legion, I mean, I deal with the town of Whitman all the time. I deal with the Department of Revenue. I deal with the uh, Internal Revenue Service. Every year I got to deal with the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, you know, when we have elections, we have to have new offices. We there's a lot of forms you got to fill out. Um, so I, I don't see a problem. I love paperwork.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, does anybody else have any questions of the gentleman?
Uh, yeah, Jim. Um, you, you mentioned that um, you noticed it was hard to get in touch with some of your, the younger veterans in town. I just, I'd second that. A, a number of my friends served in either Iraq or Afghanistan, and I know that not many of them are involved with local VFWs, American Legions, or uh, know the VSOs in the towns they live. So do you have any ideas on how to increase that outreach?
Well, you know, I've talked to like um, the state people at the uh, American Legion and they, they claim part of it has to do with the actual age of the veteran, the fact that they're either going to college, starting a family, um, their main focus is on their careers and their children and their wives and so forth and so on. They, they really don't have the time. Most veterans are in their forties. Like I was forty-two when it, before I joined the American Legion, so it's kind of, I fall in line, but um, getting the younger guys, uh, they don't want to commit, so it's something they might like twice a year if, if um, the VSO in Whitman was going to have something in the town hall or somewhere to try to get the younger guys in. You know, to let them know what's going on of their whether it be bringing a guest speaker that these young guys look up to or something like that. I don't know. Uh, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to figure out to put your, your thumb on it, but you know, that's, that's all I can think of. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I guess that's it. I want to thank, first of all, thank you for your service and thank you for what you do to our American vets, for our American vet.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Is the other one in the uh, room there, Justin?
Not yet.
Wow, really?
We're running a little ahead of schedule.
Yeah, well. And I was worried about running over schedule with the chief, but.
Well, we have a low.
Yes.
Just wanted to address um, whoever of the three that we picked tonight, I will uh, um, onboard as far as the one fifteen stuff and any outdated months that haven't been closed yet uh, will be closed in its entirety. So therefore they start with the month of February moving forward. Um, and we are in the middle of recertification, so all of our vets that are needing assistance are in the middle of recertificate, recertification with the office. Those will be closed out with myself and the new VSO, so the VSO doesn't have to close that out on their own, be in there.
Chris, do, do any of them go to school, get any further training on the process?
Um, so the way that's working right now, Dan, is um, unfortunately with, with it being in the middle of the pandemic, um, the state will reach out and they will uh, be available for weekly phone calls that we all do. Um, but a lot of it is going to be, we're learning from PowerPoint, unfortunately, in the middle of it.
Okay.
Um, once we get on the other side of this, they will have um, they will have somebody do a site visit with the VSO. And I've spoken with other VSOs in the area that we can uh, reach out and uh, definitely provide our services if, if need be.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else have any comments, questions of Chris?
Oh, wow. Chris, um, I just wanted to thank, thank you for, for uh, for helping out um, with this process. Um, we've uh, had some good candidates and uh, and your expertise has been uh, essential in uh, getting us through this. So I want to thank you for helping us out as a town as well as the uh, interview process because we probably couldn't have done it without you.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Uh, let's take care of vets and neighbor in towns, take care of neighbor in towns, so.
Are they there yet, uh, Justin?
No, not yet. I think uh, we're
Way ahead of schedule.
Twenty-five minutes ahead. We might have to wait a little bit.
Uh, Chris, Chris, I do have a question. Um, what uh, uh, age bracket are you seeing on the South Shore uh, in need of the most ser- service? Are, are we seeing it uh, Vietnam or vets or is it kind of an aging population and, and now it's going to uh, you know, the next group under that or where are you seeing the need for services age-wise?
Um, I would, I would break it down sixty percent Vietnam and before. They're the ones that need the one fifteen. Um, if anybody comes on prior to their, you know, prior to that, that age bracket, they're still in the workforce, they're still able to work. So they may be on one fifteen, but not as long as the Vietnam and uh, before. And then um, myself, I, I just turned forty and I'm an Iraq and Afghanistan vet and I'd say um, a good twenty percent are us, you know, getting back, getting off active duty, getting out of the garden reserves, filing VA claims. That's your next um, percentage. And then um, the remainder would be, which is, which is not nearly as, as much as you would think, but the remainder is the young kids that get off active duty. Uh, most of them are going, you know, straight into the civilian world after doing four years of college and uh, but that's, that's pretty much the breakdown. It's um, like I said, the, the Vietnam vets and before needing the most assistance. And, and then the uh, the, the current uh, vet generation. And the main reason that is, is because um, the, just the technology gap. I can have a conversation with a vet my age or a little bit older, a little bit younger and explain to them how to do something online. Whereas um, the older vets, they, they may be able to do it, but they just feel more comfortable in an office, sitting there with somebody walking them through it.
Hmm. You mean, you tell me you can't teach an old dog new tricks? Is that what you're saying?
Some of them, some of them come in, I'll, I'll, I'll spun up.
Well, what shall we do? Do we take a break? And wait, you know, till fifteen minute break? Shall we do that or what do you think?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's anything else we can do.
Right. Eric, is, is uh, cable on, with us, still with us or, or not?
Yeah, I'm here.
Maybe we can take a fifteen minute break?
I can put on some jazz music or something in the background uh, during this time if you need that.
Okay, so how about if we uh, take a uh, fifteen minute break, re-adjourn, we'll say at uh, eight o'clock. How's that sound?
I'm going to leave this recording, um, just because I'd hate for anything to go wrong. So uh,
Okay.
leave this recording.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's take a break. All right, thank you very much. Um, and uh, Chris, is Brian, is Brian available right now?
Um, I believe they're, Justin's.
Yeah, ready? Here he is.
There you go. Okay, Chris, you're up.
Brian, how you doing today? In your own words.
Unmute yourself.
There we go.
Okay.
Brian, in your own words, can you explain um, Massachusetts general law one fifteen and what type of benefits it offers our veterans here in Whitman?
Uh, law, general law one fifteen, uh, it gives benefits to um, well, first General Law 115, it gives benefits to, well, first, you need to be a veteran, elderly that don't work, are unable to work for one reason or another. And it can also help surviving veterans, surviving spouses of veterans, and help them with finances, medical supplies, medical payments, things like that.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes.
What, what type of experience do you have that would benefit the town of Whitman in your role as Veteran Service Officer?
I have a lot of experience in several different venues from my 30-plus years of experience even after leaving the military. I feel that with my experience, from my sales experience to my veteran experience with the Massasoit Veterans Center down there, working with the veterans, helping some veterans with HUDBash, trying to get into housing. That is, that's a big thing. I think the way of the Veteran Service Officer could be morphing in a way where you can get to general, get some general access, be it radio or TV, get the word out there and really bring the whole community to know who you are and to know the services that you can offer.
Excellent, thank you. Can you tell us of a time where you had to face a difficult situation in your job and how you would handle it? Reason I, we bring this up is because veterans not only, you know, they don't walk into our offices and get good news all the time. So sometimes you've got to give them the bad news and then they've got to deal with it.
True, true. That is understandable. There has been times, like when I worked for Alvin Hollis Heating Company, when I would go to people's house in the middle of the night, they would not be happy. I would go there and I would explain to them exactly what I would do. I would show them this, this, this. A lot of the time, they would be, listen, just get it done. But a lot of the time that they would sit down with me and see what I was doing, okay, he knows what he's doing. I feel better about it. By the time I left, they had heat and they had a warm feeling in their heart where he took the time to help me out. And I understand with veterans that if a veteran coming right out of the service, maybe the first thing he knows is, you know what, I'm going to sign up for Chapter 115. Well, he can come in the office and it doesn't behoove him to do so because he has so much more potential coming out of the military. He's got all of that experience that people love. So I can show him where he can take to the next level everything he can do. So he doesn't have to depend on something that the government hands out. He can go out and make his own way and I can help him do that.
Excellent, thank you. In your own words, can you explain the VA claims process and anything you know about the paperwork with that?
Well, I've done VA claims two, three different times. I've had assistance with it in the, in the beginning, but I know exactly who to talk to in Brockton and in Jamaica Plain. And I feel if it helps everyone, if at first you don't have, you don't know all the information you need, you know where to go to get it and you can get all that information, get your checklist, and then talk to the people with all the great information that you need. So I could jump on that quick.
Excellent, thank you. Can you tell us how you've managed budgets in your previous employment and how you would relate that to this job?
Right, I've, while I've done budgeting, again, as a homeowner, I've done budgeting for decades. And also when I was the president of the Massasoit Veterans Center, the Veterans Club, excuse me, I was able to do the budget with them. I worked that budget out. We would get additional funds from the school every year because the budget was right. Did that also with the, the radio club that I was president of. And every year, the budget was right on the mark. So we, it worked out well for the groups. They got additional funds from the school because we were well within budget.
Excellent, thank you. How do you plan to organize your day if you were to become the Veteran Service Officer here in Whitman?
Well, the way I usually start my day is before I need to start my day. I have a list of everything that I need to do and learn. I would get everything ready on my own time. Whereas when I can go in there, if someone needs me, I have time for them. But I put restraints on my time. Like if I need to work through lunch to learn something additional, so be it. If I need to take work home and learn things additional, so be it. That's what I need to do. Right now, I'm going through school and I'm treating school as my job. And the next time I have a full-time job, I can definitely go in and, and put all my ducks in a row and make sure everything's organized, which is a plus.
Excellent, thank you. What type of systems do you use to stay organized in your daily routine? I.e. Word, Excel, Outlook, anything, anything out of the ordinary to keep you organized?
Well, I used Microsoft Word all the time. I've used Excel. I've done programming with Excel. I'm doing this spring classes on webpage design. So I'm versed in a lot of the Microsoft Office platforms. Proficient, I wouldn't say that, but I'm versed in it.
Excellent, thank you. What type of experience do you have working with veterans outside of what you've mentioned previously?
I've worked with veterans when I was at the Abington Food Pantry. I was there for a couple of years volunteering my time, met some veterans there and really just listened to their stories and helped them out. That's the one thing that I think a lot of veterans need. They need to be heard, especially now when everybody is isolated. Veterans want to be heard. They want to get their story out. So when I was at the food pantry, I was able to sit down a couple of times, a couple of different veterans in Abington and really just listen to them and let them know that you're not alone. People want to help. And I got them the assistance they needed and it really worked out, I think, for them.
Excellent, thank you. How do you plan on using community outreach in your role as Veteran Service Officer?
I will find every availability that I can have for outreach and I will do everything I can, whether I am in conjunction with the local food pantries, whether there's a drive that I can be part of and help out with. And really, if there are some veterans, core veterans or things like that, maybe I can get them involved with, hey, we're going to do this. We're going to raise money or we're going to raise food for the local food pantries. Let's all get together and do this. Can I count on you guys to do this? And really work with them and get, get my name out there from, be it, you know, the, the radio, print, whatever we can do, just to let everybody know.
Excellent, thank you. What is your passion when it comes to working with veterans?
I, it's really, it's a lot of different things because when I got out in 90, there wasn't a lot of people around to help. And I wasn't privy. I didn't know like Joe Calatoni from Abington. I didn't know those people. And what I would like to do is just to let them know who I am and that they have more than just what they want to do in life. They don't have to come in and depend on, you know, Uncle Sam for the benefits for the rest of their life. They can go make something themselves. And then when they need the assistance, we'll be there for them, you know? And I really, I really know that the veterans need a voice. A lot of veterans have voices, but a lot of veterans feel like they have been silenced. And they need somebody just to sit and listen to them and to tell them that, okay, I hear you. It's going to work out. We're going to get everything taken care of. And just to talk to them in a calm manner and to let them know that, okay, I got your six. I have, I'm with you and I really look forward to it.
Excellent, thank you. And this concludes the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone have any questions of Brian? Well, I'll start off by, I'll ask the same question I've asked the two other applicants. In the past, we have had a veteran agent who was lax in getting the paperwork done. And we had to have people come in and work weekends to make sure that all the processes were completed and the paperwork was into the state for the town to be reimbursed, their portion of it. Do you see that as an issue?
No, not at all. I, when I have a job to do, I follow it first, second, to the end, okay? The job doesn't get done, I don't leave until the job's done. So I don't have anybody else do what I need to do. And if I don't know how to do it, I learn how to do it, then I become proficient in it. So there's no worries.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Saying none, thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
And Chris, I guess what we'll be doing next is once we vote on it, you will contact each of the person.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I mean, are we, you know, I assume we're going to vote on it now, so. Do you want Brian to be muted until we talk about it? Or is it okay if he stays on? What do you think the process?
Let's go ahead and, uh, let's go ahead and, yeah, we'll let Brian, we'll let Brian go and then we'll, we'll do what we need to do.
Okay, all right, Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
For the position.
Okay, bye-bye.
Yes. Okay, I guess the process now is, is we, we have three applicants and we need to either discuss them or if somebody wants to make a motion, we can give the yes and no's and how we feel about each applicant. Does anybody want to start off?
Well.
Yes.
I just start off and thank, you know, Chris, Brian and Lisa for their efforts and.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
The three, three excellent candidates. I mean, I don't think it can go wrong in any direction. I would like to ask, since they've been involved with us throughout, for maybe Brian and Chris's opinions or Lisa's.
Again, Justin, you know, all three candidates are, are outstanding candidates. If, I was going to say, if you guys are, if you guys are asking me as far as full, as far as full spectrum, I believe, you know, Sarah would be a good candidate. But like I said, that's just, that's just from sitting in my seat over here.
Does anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, Mr.
Yes, Brian.
Mr. Chairman. I agree with Chris. I like Sarah's enthusiasm. And the other two candidates, Jim and Brian, I think we wouldn't go wrong with either one of them. They all seem very committed to the veteran community. And I don't think that we'd have any problem, it appears, with them doing their work in a timely fashion. I, you know, it's my preference. I've always believed it would be nice to have somebody who lives in the town, work for the town, I think gives them some skin in the game. However, I, I think Sarah would be a good choice here. Breath of fresh air. She seems to have the, a lot of good answers. I took a lot of notes for the second time, as you know, we went through this already. And I matched them up and, and I've come to the same conclusion. I think this should be a good choice.
Okay, Justin, do you have any opinions?
Um, I, yeah, I was, I was very impressed with Sarah. I think, I think she'd be an excellent choice for the town.
Yeah. Thank you. Randy?
The resumes, that, that's who I liked from the beginning, believe it or not. I, I think what you see there is, and this is where my question went to Chris, are we seeing that age range of, you know, somewhere between you and I, Chris, of, is a, you served in the same time period, you know, that, that shift and more relatable. She impressed me. I liked her enthusiasm and her energy and, yeah. But again, I also thought Mr. Murphy was pretty good as well. Yeah.
Okay, Kyle?
Yeah, I think it's a tough choice. The three of them were good. Sarah was a breath of fresh air. She's got a great personality. She also has the, the knowledge that she needs and she has more than enough enthusiasm. I liked her from the first time that I listened to her. I really liked the stability of Jim Murphy. He's a guy who's had important jobs at interesting places and he seems dedicated to veterans. I liked him also. And Brian, just to let you know, the Green Key Society at Massasoit that he belonged to only is given out to about 10 students per year for a service to the college and to the community. It's not, it's like the highest award they can give out. And I didn't know him. I had retired by the time he, he was there. But that's just something that stuck in my mind. He's a quality guy, too. I can go, I can go along with Sarah. It seems like that's the opinion of the majority of the people. But I don't think we could go wrong, as other people have said, with any of the three candidates.
Right, I agree, Kyle. I mean, all three were outstanding. My biggest question is follow-through. I want to make sure that we don't get caught into the same situation that we've had way back when, when, when paperwork wasn't completed. But she seems to be very fluently with computers and, boy, she's, she seems like she's going to be a go-getter and she's going to help the veterans and do what they need. And it seems that, she seems to be able to, you know, get along with them and deal with them and know what they need and fulfill their needs. So I have no issue on either, either applicant. And if the board feels that Sarah is the way, you know, is the fresher, the breath of fresh air and that we should vote for her, I'd like somebody to make a motion to that effect. And we'll go from there. Yes.
Could I, I'd like Lisa Green's opinion on this.
Oh, yeah.
She went through these interviews as well, the first round. And I'd like to hear what she has to say about it.
Yeah, Lisa.
I think Sarah is a good choice. The majority of the board seems to like her. She has a great enthusiasm and I think she'd be a good fit for Whitman.
Okay, you know, does anybody think that the fact that she lives in, so the furthest away, that that would be an issue? It's like a half an hour to get here, so it shouldn't be an issue at all. She should be available when needed, so.
It's halfway to my wife's work, so it's.
There you go. All right, so would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, for?
Somebody already?
Huh?
I would like to make a motion for Sarah Lansing to be our, our next VSO, Sarah Lansing.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I will second that, Randy.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Saying none. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So Chris, if you can give her a call, congratulate her and thank her very much. And the other two gentlemen, thank them very much. And we glad to see her in, while in town hall, she has an office by herself. So we'll have to go over those rules and regulations as far as entry. But thank her very much and we'll be glad to have her work for the town of Whitman.
Will do, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, um, it is now, what time is it now? Eight twenty. I'll need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law 30A21A2 to conduct strategy, a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel to wit the town administrator. And three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigations between the town and Edward Slocum as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town as declared by the chair. And then we're going to go into executive session in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law 30A20. Executive session portion of this meeting will be held in an online conference mode hosted by zoom.com. Members of the public will not be able to physically attend. No broadcasts of executive session will be made and will be coming, will be adjourning out of executive session. So do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Don't move, go into executive session.
Huh? Okay, hear a second? Second, okay. No discussion? Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
Brian? Brian? Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
Randy? And I'd say yes. So we're gonna stay on the same length. We'll just, uh, go into executive session as soon as, uh, Justin gets us there.
We'll give WHCA a minute to, uh, to close now.